Welcome, everyone. Welcome, everyone, to today's Town of Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. The date is March 30, 2023. Pursuant to Governor Healey's, first time I've said that, March 29, 2023, signing of the Acts of 2023 extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law until March 31, 2025. This meeting of the Chatham Select Board, well, maybe not, huh? How do they sneak in here? Let's try that again. This meeting of the Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted in person via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410. Then you have to punch in the ID number for the conference, which is 468-549-857, then hit the pound. Or you can join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. In accordance with town policy, the public can speak to any issue or hearing or business item on the agenda during the meeting when recognized by the chair. To authorize this hybrid form of meeting, we need a roll call of all members. Please give your name and whether you agree or not, starting with Buck.
James M. Upson, I'm in favor of this format.
Jenny.
Virginia Fenwick, I'm in favor of the format.
Paul C. Simple, I'm in favor of the format.
David S. Nixon, I'm in favor.
Randy Poyash in favor.
Dave Veach is in favor.
Is there anyone here who would like me to run through how the meeting is conducted? Most of you are experienced in this, so I'm not going to do it. If you, basically, the lady to my right, this is Sarah B. Clark, she's the PPO for the town, that's the Principal Permitting Officer. She will read the application, and then we have presentation, we have questions from members of the audience, we have correspondence to read, and all the rest of it. Then we end up with a vote at the end, and the vote in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, in order to be successful, you need a supermajority, that's four yes votes out of the five. And we're all going to be voting today on different things, and you'll see, and I'll announce at each one who's voting as we go along. So let's start, Sarah, with 23 dash, oh, I'll bet there's, no, we don't have any, no minutes, the one time I remember it. Oh, geez, well, all right, I'll try it again next time. Sarah, 23-017, please.
Application number 23-017, Ken Atchison, care of Bob Lacy, 40 Kent Place, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Less see of the property located at 1238 Main Street, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessors map, block 7, lot 32. The applicant seeks an appeals permit under section 225-19 of the Town of Chatham sign bylaw to allow the placement of a 35-inch-by-96-inch, 23.33-square-foot wall sign not facing a street frontage in addition to the roof sign. The lot contains 30,056 square feet in a GB3 zoning district. The proposed sign requires an appeals permit under section 225-19 of the Chatham sign bylaw.
Okay, I'd be looking for anyone by the name of Ken Atchison.
Bob Lacy.
Or Bob Lacy, okay.
Bob Lacy, Chatham San Shop.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Floor's yours.
So my client wants to put a sign up on the west end of his property, which is at 1238 Main, and it's in with Island Pursuit, and the signs are matching, and it would be a gold-leaf carved sign on the west end of the property on the wall.
Okay. Will that be your presentation?
Excuse me?
Will that be your presentation? Yes. If you'd go through the criteria for us, please.
The specifications of the sign?
No, the criteria that we have for signs. Sarah had sent that to you.
Okay, item one. It's appropriate because the wall is blank, and it's a perfect place for a sign. The problem with driving up and down a road is that you don't see signs that are parallel to the road as easily as you see one that is perpendicular to the road. And this sign is on the wall of the building, which is perpendicular to the road, so you have a good sight of it as you're approaching town. I think one of the concerns of the owner was not being downtown, he wanted to have visibility because he's not in the walking district. And so this affords him the visibility, he needs to show that he's there. And the second, the second item here, we did check with the neighboring building nearby, and they agreed that it was not a problem having the sign there, they weren't opposed to it. The neighboring building is Pates. Item three. Not adversely protecting, not adversely affecting properties in the neighborhood. Well, it was advertised, to my knowledge, there was no complaints. So it says, it refers to the bylaw, what is the, where's the bylaw?
Well, we have that, you can go on. Go ahead. Is there any other item you wish to speak to?
That would be it.
Okay. Okay, I'll ask for anyone here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this to indicate they'd like to join the meeting.
I see no one that wishes to speak in favor.
I'll read the correspondence, which consists of a certificate of appropriateness. This is from the Historic Business District Commission from the Town of Chatham. On March 1, 2023, the HBDC met and rendered the following decision with regard to the application. They voted four in favor, zero in op, zero abstaining, to approve the sign. And the only condition is, any changes or alterations have to be, you need additional approval from the HBDC. That's the extent of the correspondence. Is there anyone here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak against this? If so, please indicate you'd like to join this conversation now.
I see no one that wishes to speak in opposition or has a question.
Okay, then we'll have questions from the board. Randy.
I don't have any questions.
Dave.
Yeah, Bob, do you know there's a reference in the application to the proposed roof sign? Do you, we don't have any information about the roof sign, do you know anything about it?
The roof sign was approved, and here's a picture of the roof sign.
And what are the, do you know the dimensions of that? That looks like similar.
Thirty-six by 96.
Same thing, 35 by 96.
Thirty-five by 96, yeah.
So that's the roof sign, and this is, this is a repeat of the roof sign you're asking for, right?
That's correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Buck.
So is there, your understanding, is there any rule about how many signs you can have, like 10, or can you put up how many?
That's, that's not up to me.
Oh, okay, so, but you're not aware of what the number, because as I drive down Main Street and look, it's new, right next door, your neighbor, Island Pursuit, has one sign, and Pates has one sign, and McCut has one sign, and this looks like you're looking for two signs. Okay, thank you.
Jenny.
Can you tell us, do you know if the sign on the side of the building will be lit? Is there any intention to?
No, it wouldn't be lit, no.
Okay, thank you.
As I understand it, Bob, the reason you're here is because there is a roof sign, and under the regulations, you have a choice of a roof sign or a wall sign. And so you need to come by appeal here because you're putting a wall sign on a building that already is approved for a roof sign.
Yes, if there's a choice between the two, they would take the wall sign, yeah?
They would take it down, is that what you said?
They would, they would decide in favor of having the wall sign versus the roof sign. The roof sign could come down, it'd have to, the previous owner had a sign there, and he left the structure there, so that would have to come off, and then, so it looked nice without, you know, that empty structure doesn't look that great.
All right. The roof sign, I did check, the roof sign for Island Pursuit, I think, has dimensions which are actually smaller than this sign or the roof sign that you proposed for, for this business. The, the roof sign for Island Pursuit is 20 by 96, and the roof sign for this building would be 30 or 36 by 96?
Thirty, the roof sign was 35 by 96.
Okay, and the wall sign is also 35 by 96?
Right, but that's subject to change, if you want to make it smaller.
No, I'm just trying to get a feel for what, what you're planning for the whole complex. One of the other things I noticed was that there is currently a hanging sign, a very small, I thought, small hanging sign for Island Pursuit on the road.
Yep.
Sign, correct?
Yeah, the road sign is there, yeah.
And is that being replaced with something else?
The road sign will stay there.
All right, is, is there a road sign that's going to be there which will cover both Island Pursuit and this footwear business?
There's two, two small signs that hang one above the other on the, on the street sign.
All right, so then, in terms of total numbers of signs for this business?
The, the roof, the roof sign, the, the street sign, and now this wall sign.
All right. How, how do you make, or how did your client make the decision about how big to make this wall sign?
It was to do with the size of the wall, it's a big wall there, and they took like 10, 9% of, 9% of the wall space.
And it was a 9% figure that was picked because of a 10% limitation under the sign Is, is that yes?
I didn't, I didn't hear the question.
I, I'm sorry, did, is the 9% figure the one that you used because there is a limit of 10% on a wall sign?
We took the sign of the, on the roof and duplicated it on the end wall, and it, and made sure that it made the, the requirements, and we submitted that.
So you made sure that it was under 10%?
Yeah, yeah.
May I show you in front of the microphone, please?
Oh.
Thank you.
I don't have any other questions, thank you.
So Sarah, as I understand it from you, there's no by right for a sign that's on the side of a building that doesn't face the street, is that correct?
That is correct.
So this, so this gentleman was telling us that there's going to be exclusive of anything on the side. You've got a roof sign, you've got a sign on the street, what other signs do you expect will be there?
The Historic Business District also approved two window signs, which will show, and I can pull it up on my screen, will show the logos of the manufacturers that they sell. So here, they have two window signs, which are just at the base of the windows there.
Okay. Did the HBDC also approve a sign for the side of the building? There's a big window there.
They are only allowed, under our sign bylaw, two window signs.
Two window signs?
So they did not apply for one of those.
Okay.
The HBDC did approve all of the signage that is proposed for this building.
So right now, there are, without the wall sign facing Pates, there's four signs already, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? All right, Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing, you move into deliberations.
Dave Veach, seconds.
Buck.
Buck approves.
Paul.
Paul approves.
Randy approves.
And Dave Veach approves.
And I approve. Let's start with, Paul.
Well, I think it's obviously a good-looking sign with the gold leaf and the black background, and we know that Chatham Sign does good work. The, the question really becomes, in my mind, whether we're getting more signs than we actually need in one location, and we have a sign ordinance which is theoretically designed to deal with that issue. So I have some hesitation with respect to simply approving another wall sign, and, and frankly, in terms of the sign size, I think it is designed to be under the 10% limit. Other than that, when you look at the building coming, coming down 28, going towards Chatham, it's very prominent, you definitely will see whatever size sign is there. So I have some concern about whether we're over-signing here. At the same time, when, when it refers to the ordinance and what, what they're dealing with there, the ordinance is the sign ordinance, and, and looking at that, which is, I think, 225-1, that ordinance is designed to encourage signs for people that need it for their business, and to encourage that, at the same time, to try and maintain the nature of Chatham in its historical perspective. So there are a number of things that are going into this decision. I know that Dave Veach has done a fair amount of work in terms of this based on his background, and so I'd like to hear what he has to say, too.
Randy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm sure you do good work, and what I'm going to say is not personal, but I don't like the idea of writing on buildings like that. I think Pates has set the bar very low, and they can be mad at me if they want, but I think it looks lousy to just write on the building. It's almost like borderline graffiti, so I don't think it's necessary, I don't think it's professional. I think the sign in the front is nice, and the sign on the street is nice, but not, not on the building, so. I don't know if you're going to write on it, I have some sign installed, either way, I don't like the way it looks, so I like the other signs.
Dave Veach.
Well, I think that, I, I wasn't aware, when I was out there looking, I wasn't aware that they've also approved a hanging sign. I made note that the other businesses, Island Pursuit and Bob's Beach Finns, both have a hanging sign of small stature that, out there, so that in addition, and it is true, you know, the, the signage parallel to the road, being the roof signs, are, are not easily seen by cars traveling up and down the road, so in that sense, the, but they also are going to have a hanging sign comparable to the other businesses on, on the property. I, I mean, the, the HBDC, which is, their, their charge is aesthetics, I, they've, they have approved this, and I take note of that, and I'm, I'm a little conflicted because I think that, what I think I heard Bob say, and I think maybe it might be better to, if we can, if they, if we were to approve this wall sign, then I'm not so sure, I'm, I'm in favor of having the roof sign that's been approved, especially the sizing. Both of those, both of those are just very, very close to the maximum size allowed. Roof sign can't, it can't be any taller than three feet, and so they've kept it at 35 inches, that, that's, that's allowable, but it's, same thing with the signage on the side. The regulations are kind of guiding us, saying, well, one or the other in, in this respect. And I had thought, well, because they don't have, they have the signage parallel to the street, and then they have window signage parallel to the street, that, you know, they still, but having that hanging sign gives them something that's perpendicular to the street. I, I'm, I'm struggling with this one a little bit, I hate to say no, especially to a new businessperson coming into town, but I also feel that it's, both in sighting and size, it, it's fairly large on that end wall of that building, and, and I, I would, I would prefer that it be scaled down somewhat, maybe placed over the top of that window or something. It's, it doesn't, up in the middle of the building like that, I don't know, but now I'm getting into what should have been, I would think, HBDC considerations. So I'm, I have, those are my thoughts, I'm not sure how.
Buck.
Certainly getting more confusing as we talk. We, so HBDC has approved the roof sign, we might be thinking that, well, we shouldn't do the wall sign, from the conversation I've heard. Then the question becomes, well, how much bigger can they make the hanging sign, and do they have to come back to us for that? Can, do you know the answer to that, Jay?
I'd like to defer to Sarah.
Sarah. Okay.
A, a ground sign located 0 to 15 feet from the roadway is allowed to be 20 square feet. They would need to go back to the HBDC for an increase in size, however, they would not to, need to seek an appeals permit from this board, as long as they have it at or under that amount of square footage.
So if...
And that's total sign, not each sign on the board.
Oh, a total?
Total, so.
With Island Pursuit and their sign.
Right, I got it.
One square feet.
I think, I call it Manson Galleries, but whatever it's called now, they got a sign with a whole bunch of, you know, 30 little signs or whatever, but I got it, 20 and 15 feet. So the application before us tonight is for the wall sign, and the other two are outside of our domain, so I'm all set.
Okay, Jenny.
So I agree with what Mr. Simple and Mr. Veach said, it feels like a lot of signage. I do appreciate the, the aesthetic of the sign and the attempt to have it look Chatham-y with the black and the gold, think that was a nice design, but I, I actually think, if you do the, the roof sign, it, it parallels the existing one that's next to Island Pursuit, so it looks good. You see, there, there are two businesses there in that one building, which, by the way, looks like it's all just one building, so you kind of see, oh, there's two businesses, and if you're driving on either side, you know, going towards Chatham or away from Chatham, you can see that, where you can't see that sign unless you're going to Chatham, you don't see it at all if you're going outside of Chatham. So if it's a matter of choosing signs, that's obviously not my call, but I, I think that it's too many signs to have the roof sign and the side, the wall sign, and, and I also think there could be a possible safety thing, because the sign on the wall is set farther back, so you have to really, like, look to see that, I think, and you're only seeing it now as you're going to Chatham. So it's just that, you know, you're taking your eyes off the road to look at the sign that isn't right there, it's back there, so it just could be, that's just a minor comment about safety.
Yeah, from my standpoint, the four signs that are already approved are ample for that business. To add a fifth sign, particularly this one, which is very large, it's on a side, and there's, nobody has any right to a side sign, and Jenny, if they decided to scrap the roof sign and just have the one on the side, they still have to come to us. They can't do that by right. I mean, that might be an interesting choice and all that. So I'm very concerned about, and I see it everywhere I go, particularly, it could be a simple thing, is on Route 6, there's a sign blight going on, everywhere you go, it's more signs, more signs. So I know in this case, I'm going to have to vote no on it. Okay, Paul.
I wonder, given the provision in 225-19B... I wonder, given the provision in 225-19B, which says, "An appeal denied by the side code. Appeals committee shall not be resubmitted or act upon favorably within a period of two years from the date of denial," whether the applicant would like to consider withdrawing, to leave them open to resubmit with a design that's different, should that be necessary?
So, I'll agree with you are voting, that you need to get four yes votes. I didn't see maybe possibly one yes vote, I'm not too sure about the other, but I can just see you losing if we went to a vote. So, Paul's suggestion to you, that withdraw, ask for a withdrawal, would be the way for you to go. That way, you can come back, instead of waiting two years. But that's your decision. Would you like to ask us for a withdrawal without prejudice?
I don't think, I don't think I understood. Can you go over that again? What's the decision?
Here's the situation. It would appear that if we take a vote, you don't have four yes votes, and therefore, it'll go down as a no, and you cannot come back for two years. So, if you ask for a withdrawal without prejudice, then you can come back next month or two months from now, or ten months. So, I would suggest you do this.
We withdraw without prejudice.
Okay.
And reserve the right to come back in two years.
Okay. Paul?
It would be a withdrawal without prejudice, you would have the right to come back sooner than two years, but I'll move to granted, requested withdrawal without prejudice.
And Davee Chekens.
We'll take a vote on that? Buck?
Buck votes yes. Paul votes yes.
Yes.
And Davee Chekens.
And I vote yes, thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, Sarah, we're on to 23-019, and I have to say that I will not be voting on this. Jenny will be voting in my place.
Would you like to take me to read both of these applications at once?
Please.
Application number 23-019, Chatham Oyster Pond Properties LLC, care of William G. Litchfield, Esquire, 330 Orleans Road, North Chatham, Mass. 02650. Owner of property located at 101 Oyster Pond Furlong, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 13E Block 25, Lot R 24. The applicant seeks to modify special permit number 22-105, granted on November 17, 2022, which allowed for the construction of porches. The applicant now seeks to modify the special permit to allow for the installation of an exterior mechanical system appliance, AC condenser. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6 and 9, and Sections 5B and 8D 2B of the protective bylaw. In the alternative to the modification of the special permit, the applicant seeks approval for an exterior mechanical system appliance to be located 23 feet from the northerly butter, where a 25-foot setback is required, and be viewed as an extension of the existing nonconformity, rather than a separate structure, which is being reviewed as part of the subsequent application. Under application number 23-020, the applicant seeks a dimensional variance from the butter setback requirement, under Appendix 2 of the protective bylaw, for the installation of an exterior mechanical system appliance, AC condenser, 23 feet from the northerly butter, where a 25-foot setback is required. The lot contains 10,435 square feet in an R40 zoning district. A dimensional variance is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 10, and Section 8D 2C of the Chatham Protective Bylaw.
Mr. Litchfield?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Bill Litchfield here on behalf of Ed Scopus, the owner of the property at 101 Oyster Pond Having both read and just heard the application, or the legal ad, what we are seeking is much, much simpler than what was read. And in fact, my initial application was simply for modification, and I'll tell you how we got here. Sarah, would you be kind enough to bring up the site plan, please? We were in front of you on November 17 of last year, and at the time, you voted unanimously to approve that site plan. The changes that were particularly at issue were the proposed porch on the southwest side, and a proposed porch on the northeast side there. We also had shown on that site plan, a proposed air conditioning pad. As you know from having been out there, and from that site plan, the existing house is nine feet away from the northerly lot line, and there's a little indentation or alcove, or whatever you want to call it, which is 23 feet from the lot line. And Mr. Scopus wanted to put an air conditioning compressor on that pad. That pad, if you scale it off, is about 3 1/2 by 5. The actual compressor is about 30 inches square, smaller than that. In any event, you voted unanimously to approve the special permit. I did not mention, because I frankly thought it was unimportant, given the proximity of the house to the lot line, I didn't mention the air conditioning compressor, it was shown there. I know that several, if not all of you, are very precise in reviewing site plans, I don't think you missed it. It was there. After the special permit was granted, and the project went forward, Mr. Scopus brought to my attention a concern that was expressed to him, that we didn't get permission for the air conditioning unit. And I, uncharacteristically for a lawyer, have a fair amount of self-doubt. I miss the course in arrogance, so I immediately assumed that I'd filed the wrong plan. I'd filed a plan that didn't have the air conditioning compressor shown. And that wasn't the case. I filed the plan that had the air conditioning compressor shown, and the Zoning Board of Appeals approved it. As I understand it, there is a notion that we need to come back for a modification specifically to allow that. So, I'll go briefly into the criteria for a special permit, because we're seeking modification as to adequacy of site. I think you can find the site adequate for the compressor shown on the plan approved last fall, we're 23 feet from the lot line, where the garage itself is just nine feet away from the lot line. The garage sits between the location of the compressor and the lot line. The existing fence shown along the north side, Ed has spoken with the northern butter, not about the compressor, although she has no objections to it, he has spoken about it, but for unrelated reasons, he's going to be extending that stockade fence further to the west. There is, as you know, already a stockade fence along the back of the lot line. In any event, there's no change in coverage, setbacks, height, gross floor area, or living area. As to compatibility of size, it will remain completely compatible, there's no change in the size of the house, the compressor is an integral part of an upgrade and renovation of a post-war ranch, an alteration of a one or two family dwelling, for which the law makes special provisions. As to the extent of increase in nonconformity, there is none. We have sideline frontage, buildable upland, and lot-sized nonconformities. This site is 23 feet from the lot line, 14 feet further from the lot line than the existing garage. As to suitability of site, the site has been developed for residential use since just after World War II. There are no environmental concerns. I would point out, however, that environmental issues may come up in the future because of the way of an interpretation of our bylaw, because heat pumps are going to be something you're going to be seeing more and more frequently. This is not what's in front of you today, but conservation already reviewed this matter and approved it under the prior application. It's a scale sighting mass views and vistas, and there's no change in mass or sighting, but locating the compressor where it was already shown and approved is preferable to putting it, for instance, on the front porch, which would not be an appropriate location, or closer to the street, as many other homes have, and particularly some in this neighborhood. Given where it is shown, there is no impact whatsoever on views and vistas. As to compatibility of use, it's a residential use, no change, and again, increasingly the norm. The other criteria, traffic flow and safety, adequacy of water and sewer and so forth, are not at issue. The question, as you know, is whether the addition of a compressor 23 feet from the lot line, where the existing garage is just nine feet from that same lot line, whether, and is shown on a plan already approved, whether that is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the current nonconforming structure in a nonconforming lot. There is apparently a subsidiary issue, addressed in the legal ad that Sarah wrote, whether that location, 23 feet from the lot line, creates a, quote, "new," close quote, nonconformity. And that, as we know, is what was disallowed by the Dedrick decision. Dimensional categories, under our bylaw, are lot size, frontage, street setback, sideline setback, conservancy district setback, coverage and height. Those are the different kinds of nonconformities that are addressed in our bylaw. In addition to lateral expansion, in the Dedrick case, they also wanted to increase the height. They wanted to take a house conforming as to height, and create a new nonconformity, and make it taller than what was allowed. And the court said, no, you need a variance for that. That's creating a new category, a new type of nonconformity. Were previously conformed as to height, you couldn't, via a special permit, increase the height. The category here is the same, there's one category, it's a sideline deficiency. How is that corner of the property nonconforming? It's too close to the northern lot line. How will it remain nonconforming? Less close to the northern lot line than the existing garage. A single aspect is at issue here, and that's the sideline deficiency. But the compressor will be 23 feet from the lot line, where the garage is nine feet. Arguably, that's only a minimal intensification, which is an important word, the existing nonconformity, but it was appropriately found to be so, which is why we're here. Parenthetically, our bylaw says that any change within the sideline setback automatically gets us to the Zoning Board of Appeals, so even if it wasn't viewed as an intensification, we'd have to come to you anyway, and now we're here for the second time. There's a case called Gale versus Gloucester Board of Appeals, from which I will read. "The permit granting authority must first, quote, 'identify the particular aspect or respects in which the existing structure does not conform to the present bylaw,' in this case, too close to the northerly lot line. The permitting granting authority is the building inspector zoning agent. And then determine whether the proposed alteration or addition would intensify the existing nonconformities or result in additional ones. If the answer to that question is in the negative, the applicant will be entitled to issuance of a special permit." It was not in the negative, we are here, because it was viewed as an intensification, and because our bylaw requires any change within the sideline to come before you. Case goes on to say, "If the answer is in the affirmative, a finding of no substantial detriment under the second sentence, second except clause, is required. That finding stands alone as sufficient to proceed with the proposed project if the permit granting authority deems that no substantial detriment will result from the extension or alteration." Court went on to say that this conclusion is in keeping with the special treatment explicitly afforded to single or two-family residential structures. What happened here is the building inspector appropriately found that we were intensifying our nonconformity along the northern lot line, but we were not creating a new nonconformity as to proximity to that lot line. There's another case having to do with the Board of Appeals called Bellatella, and the Bellatella versus Zoning Board of Appeals case from just three years ago said, quote, "In keeping with the special protections afforded to one or two-family residential structures, a variance is not required. Obtaining a finding of, quote, 'no substantial detriment to the neighborhood' is all that is required. If a sensible construction is available, we shall not construe a statute to produce absurd results." I think it would be an absurd result to find that when you have a garage that is nine feet from the lot line, that it is substantially more detrimental, and would require a variance to have a 30 by 30-inch compressor in an area which is almost virtually, is almost completely enclosed by the fences and also by its location. "The requirements of the statute and the bylaw have been met and upheld, and you can endorse your previous finding and allow for a modification." You don't need to agree with me that putting a new compressor someplace else on the property would be the same. All you have, you don't have to agree with my argument that it is, that it's not a new nonconformity, but because you already reviewed and approved it in this location, I think it is the appropriate thing to do. You can rely on your prior findings and prior issuance of a special permit. The special permit that you grant always recites to the plans. And on page two of the decision that you wrote in November, you said, "You are authorized to build what is shown on the Moran site plan dated October," whatever the date is at the bottom side, "October 11th, I think it was, 2022." That's what was approved, that's what Ed Scopus wanted to do, wants to do, and would like to be able to go forward in doing it. All you need to do is modify, if you're willing, to modify the decision to make it plain that this compressor is substantially, is not substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconformity. And I thank you. I won't go into the variance unless you'd like me to.
No, if it's necessary, you can do it at that time, I think. Okay. Is there anyone here on Microsoft Teams that wants to speak in favor of this application? If so, please indicate you'd like to join the meeting.
There is no one that wishes to speak in favor.
I'll read the correspondence, but I don't think we have any.
There are no correspondence for this application.
Is there anyone who would like to speak against this, or has a specific question? If so, please indicate you'd like to speak.
There is no one that wishes to speak in opposition.
Okay. Questions from the board, Buck?
Mr. Litchfield, if the applicant, I probably should ask Jay what I'm going to ask you. If the applicant was to move the pad and the condenser two feet to the south, so the 23 would be 25, we wouldn't be doing anything here, would we?
If we hadn't approved it in November, I would say to do that. This, very frankly, is a matter of principle. Well, that's important. I don't laugh at principles, I don't think you do either. We have a 30 by 30-inch pad, two and a half feet. Could we shift it a foot, foot and a half, and make it? Perhaps we should, or could. It would also involve rewiring, it would also have an impact on the families' proposed use of the property. So, it could be done. Many things could be done. I don't think, I don't really think that's the issue. We're not, in this case, we're not looking for a variance, we're looking for endorsement of the plan that you already approved.
Jenny?
Thank you, Mr. Litchfield, for that presentation. So, I wasn't here at the November 17 hearing, and my first question, actually, tonight, was going to be, why wasn't it presented at that meeting? Because I did see it there, and I did realize that 23 wasn't 25. And I went to the site, and you have a photo here that shows it's not installed, and you have the two feet. I guess this is deliberational question, sorry. So, I guess my question now is, because you've answered why it wasn't presented on the 17th of November, but my question would be, what is the difficulty in moving it two feet?
The, well, I do feel strongly about the point that this does not create a new nonconformity. And I think it's important for this board, if not today, important for this board to discuss that issue. Mr. Scopus and I have talked about the feasibility of moving it. It wouldn't be easy, the wiring has all been done. It could be done, most anything could be done, I don't know, I guess, he may be joining me, if the chair allows. Did you want to comment, if I could, Mr. Chairman? Ed Scopus?
Thank you. Just to...
I'm sorry, just state your name, please.
Yes, Ed Scopus, 214 Stage Island Road. So, this property is nonconforming 360 degrees around that home, and when we thought we had approval coming out of that November meeting, we proceeded with the demolition, the construction, et cetera. So, everything's wired in that location, so it's all prepped. If I have to dismantle it, based on whatever the decision is today, we'll dismantle it and we'll move it two feet. But my other concern is, because of the rear of the property is also nonconforming to Tabitha Lane, I'm still going to be nonconforming, because I'm going to... Lane, I'm still going to be nonconforming because I'm going to move it another two feet, but I'm still not the distance I need to be from the road. So, so to Bill's point, my only option would be to put it on the front porch based on that house. There's no other location for me where I'm not, where I'm nonconforming, where I'm not So that's fundamentally the problem I have, is I really don't have, even if I push it another two feet, which I can do, and, you know, will pay to have it rewired and reconfigured, I still have a problem with the back setback, is my understanding.
Thank you for that. That's a good clarification.
Any other questions, Jen?
Mr. Chairman, could I just say something briefly?
Sure.
So the exterior mechanical appliances are specifically outlined in the bylaw as having to meet in a butter setback, so it would not have to meet a setback from Tabitha Terrace.
It would not.
It would not.
Thank you. Jenny, any other questions?
No other questions, thank you.
Paul?
I had no questions.
Randy?
I have no questions.
Dave?
Dave each has no questions.
Okay.
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave each seconds.
That needs a.
Buck approves.
Jenny? Jenny?
I approve.
Paul?
Paul approves.
Randy approves.
Dave each approves.
Okay. Jenny? Deliberations.
So Jay, thank you for that clarification, because I can see the pickle that you're in. If you move it this way, then it doesn't meet that one. But Jay's just can, here's my issue with it. There's an ordinance for a reason, and we are seeing, and I'm new to the board, but I've been looking at old tapes and I've been reviewing, and it does look like there's an increase in mechanical appliances. And you mentioned, Mr. Litchfield mentioned, there's going to be an increase in heat pumps, and we're seeing generators and AC units. So, you know, it's a, I do admire and I like how it is tucked into that corner, and it seems like a natural place for it to fit. My worry is that we, we get, you know, you're, you are here today, and, but there are, the board sees multiple residents in Chatham coming up, and they think their issue is only their issue, but it multiplies. And so my concern is just that there's an ordinance for a reason. You haven't installed it. It could be moved two feet. So that's where I'm struggling. I see how it would be definitely more preferable to have it tucked in the corner.
Paul?
Well, I think I, I agree that the, this does not really create a new nonconformity. I think the nonconformity preexists. So I think on that basis, I'm inclined to think that this can be handled by a special permit.
Randy?
No, I agree with Paul, and I would, I think it was already done. It just wasn't mentioned. So I would endorse what we already had before us last time.
Dave each.
Yes, I also agree with Paul and Randy. This, I'm swayed by the argument that, you know, we already approved this. It's not a new nonconformity requiring a variance, and so thus, and it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. We've made that determination with the rest of the plan as well. So I don't think that there's a, it doesn't seem to me, and it's, where it's cited is a good location, it's a better location than moving it two feet under any circumstances. So I'm happy to be able to find that we can modify the special permit.
Buck?
So I see, see it as two situations. One is the way it is, where it's on the other side, the south side of the garage. If the garage was, and I'm assuming it's 24 feet wide, I don't know what the width of the garage is. I didn't go out.
14 feet.
So a lot of times people like to make garages a little wider so they can open their car doors or stack some lawnmowers, snow blowers, firewood. So if this garage was 16 feet, which would be the additional two feet, it would, it would be no problem with this. The fact that the garage is there, the infringement is the north side of the garage being six to nine feet. So this wall, or hypothetical, the 16-foot wall, is not, is not really an issue. I have no problem supporting this under special permit.
Okay, Paul?
I'll move to approve the application for special permit.
I'll move to approve the application for special permit as submitted.
Dave each seconds.
Need a vote on that?
Buck approves.
Jenny?
I approve.
Paul?
Paul approves.
Randy approves.
And Dave each approves.
Okay, that's a unanimous vote. Mr. Litchfield, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I could, Mr. Chairman, ask approval to withdraw special permit number 2003, 2023 number 20.
And also the variance?
Yes, sir. That is the variance.
Well, that would fall.
Withdraw whatever's left.
Okay, okay, okay. Paul, we need a vote on that?
I need a motion.
Mr. Litchfield has withdrawn the rest of the special permit slash variance.
I'll move to grant the request of relief.
Dave each seconds.
Buck approves.
Jenny?
I approve.
Paul approves.
Randy approves.
Dave each approves.
Thank you. Okay. 23-021, please. Sarah?
Application number 23-021, 247 Seepine Road Realty Trust, care of George Riley, 63 Brook Trail Road, Brewster, Mass. 02631. Owner of property located at 247 Seepine Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessor's Map, 12K Block 4A, Lot HC140. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend or change a nonconforming dwelling on a conforming lot via the construction of an addition. The existing dwelling and proposed addition will comply with all setback requirements of the bylaw. The existing building coverage is 4,123 square feet, 10.91%, and the proposed building coverage is 4,174 square feet, 11.05%, where 10% is the maximum allowed. The lot contains 41,240 square feet, where 40,000 square feet is required in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6 and Section 5B of the protective bylaw.
Hello, Mr. Riley, how are you?
Hello, thank you.
You know, if you would just confirm our suspicion that the footprint of that stoop is what you're talking about covering?
Yes.
And tell us why, and then we'll skip the criteria, okay?
All right. The vestibular foil that they would like to have is essentially over the existing deck that you could see there. And the reason that they would like that is that they want to reconfigure their bedroom and bathroom on that side of the house. And, you know, and what they don't want is they don't want to go directly from the bedroom into the living room. They would like to have a hallway or something in the way. And they felt that this way, they could both access the house with a hall separating them and also out onto the patio and deck. And it would allow them to reconfigure their, their bedroom, bathroom, the way they want. And to do that, they want to increase the building coverage, which is there about, I think, one-tenth of one percent approximately, at 51 square feet. And that addition is on the rear of the house and is virtually invisible from the road or from most sidelines. So essentially, that's, that's the case.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone here on Microsoft Teams who would like to support or speak in favor of this application? If so, please indicate that they'd like to join the meeting.
I see no one that wishes to speak in favor.
The correspondence consists of a note from Judith Georgio, the health agent for Town of Chatham. She writes on 3/28, I review the plan to renovate. The plan is proposed, does not add septic flow, nor will the changes encroach on the existing septic. I have no concerns. Is there anyone here in the audience or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak either against this or has a specific question? If so, please indicate you'd like to join the meeting.
There is no one that wishes to speak in opposition or has a question.
Okay, I'll just say in general, does anybody on the board have a question?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave each seconds.
Buck approves.
Paul approves.
Randy approves.
Dave each approves.
And I approve. Deliberations, we'll start with Randy.
I have no problem with this. I, oh, we're already in deliberations.
Uh huh. We skipped right to it.
All right, great. So meets the criteria, and I do.
Not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, meets our law criteria.
My comments are as small as the square footage they're asking for.
Okay. Jenny?
Meets all the setbacks, only changes in the building coverage, it's doing us.
Paul?
I agree with the previous comments. I'll move to approve the application as submitted. I don't see a need for conditions.
No, certainly not.
Dave each seconds.
Buck approves.
Paul approves.
Randy approves.
Dave each approves.
And I approve. Unanimous vote. Thank you, Mr. Riley. May all your future applications be that quick. Doubt it, right? Yeah, right. Okay. Sarah, we're on to, whoop. We're on to 23-022, please.
Application number 23-022, JMC MCS LLC, care of Shane Rizzo, 26 Christmas Tree Lane, Kingston, Mass. 02364. Owner of property located at 76 Nob Hill Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessor's Map, 12I Block 24K, Lot H11. The applicant proposes to install an X-Tier Mechanical System appliance, generator, six feet from the northerly butter where a 15-foot setback is required. The proposed generator will be located next to an existing AC condenser, which is located 12 feet from the northerly butter. The lot contains 10,955 square feet in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6 and Section 5B of the Chatham protective bylaw.
We have a gentleman on Microsoft Teams. Please introduce yourself.
Hi, good afternoon, Sarah. My name is Shane Rizzo. We are the electrical contractors handling the install of the generator should it be approved. Sarah outlined everything very well. The only thing of importance that I believe she left out was this generator is completely concealed from view by all neighbors and the street by a six-foot privacy fence. The generator is about 69 decibels when it's running. To put that into comparison, lawnmower is about 95 decibels, or about 33% louder. So we don't believe that there would be any impact to any neighbors for noise or sight.
Okay, would that be your presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there anyone here on Microsoft Teams that would like to speak in favor of this application?
There is no one that wants to speak in favor.
Okay, and there is no correspondence. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either against it or has a specific question? If so, indicate you'd like to join the meeting.
There is no one that wishes to speak in opposition or has a question.
All right, questions from the board. Dave?
I have no questions.
Buck?
No questions.
Jenny?
No questions.
Paul?
No questions.
No, no questions.
Okay. Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave each seconds.
Need a vote on that?
Buck approves.
Paul?
Paul approves.
Randy?
Dave each approves.
I approve. Buck, deliberation?
It's easy, no problem. I'll support it.
All right. Jenny?
I was a little concerned with that maybe the neighbor would, that's near that property fence line might say something, but they didn't. So I, I don't have any further questions or comments.
Paul?
It's certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, so I will go to approve it.
And I agree with Paul.
And I agree as well.
Okay. Paul?
We have ongoing construction going on there now. I don't see any need for additional conditions, so I'll move to approve it as submitted.
Dave each seconds.
And Buck approves.
Paul approves.
Randy approves.
Dave each approves.
I approve. That's a unanimous vote. Thank you, Mr. Rizzo.
Thank you, sir.
Which brings us to 23-023, please.
Application number 23-023, CBI 2045 Chatham Bars Avenue LLC, care of Andrew L. Singer Esquire, P.O. Box 67, Dennisport, Mass. 02639. Owner of property located at 20 Chatham Bars Avenue, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessor's Map, 15D Block 47, Lot 95. The applicant seeks a special permit under Section 3D 3I to allow for a use permitted in the less restrictive zone to be authorized for the entire lot. If the commercial use of the lot is allowed, a special permit under Section 3C 4C 10 is required for a 10-bed dormitory and professional office. The existing structure is and will remain nonconforming, and it is set back 12.7 feet from the private way where 25 feet is required. The parking area is nonconforming, and it is located five feet from the southerly butter, 10 feet from the easterly butter, and seven feet from the private way. The existing lot coverage, 9,239 square feet, 52.7%, and the proposed lot coverage is 10,104 square feet, 57.7%, where 70% is the maximum allowed. The lot contains 17,523 square feet in the R20/GB2 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6 and 9, and Sections 3C 4C 10, 3D 3I, 5B, 7B 11, and 8D 2B of the protective bylaw.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm on the butters list for this project, so as I have in the past, I will recuse.
Okay, very good. We will see you next time. Thank you. That would mean to Mr. Singer that the five folks you see up here would be the voters.
Thank you. Good afternoon, for the record. My name is Andrew Singer, attorney in Dennisport, here on behalf of the applicant. With me in the second row is Gary Thulander, who is the general manager of Chatham Bars Inn. We appreciate your time today. We were here for all except Ms. Fenwick a few months ago for the proposal. There were some concerns raised at that time, so we withdrew at that point so that we could do a little bit more outreach and tweak the application a little bit with more safeguards and regarding the plan. So we're back today with the request, and I wanted to go briefly through the what, how, safeguards and process for the proposal. So the, Sarah read the alphabet soup of special permits that we're seeking. I'm not going to repeat all those numbers, but those are all related here under the split zone properties. So the what? In 2018-19, the board approved that this building could be used as a mixed use under special permit for 16 employees and five, and five bedrooms in an apartment. Given the, so what the proposal is right now is to decrease the number of employees from 16 to eight and to increase the number of beds from five to 10. These are all beds that would be used for managers of the inn. The reasoning for the request is that since the time that you first approved this, we obviously went through COVID. And COVID resulted in a dramatic and I think pretty permanent change in how people work and other things that are happening. So in this case, so many more people are working remotely that that has impacted, you know, the employee use of the property. At the same time, there has been a, as you know very well, we discussed it last time, you know, a staggering loss of housing opportunities, both as ownership or rentals or as houses have become either primary residences or weekly rentals. And, and Mr. Thulander is happy to address this if you have questions. He has lists of hundreds of employees that he's still trying to find housing for, and in this case, this building, this property is being designated just for managers of the inn. And the five slots that are, you know, the five beds that are there now are already accounted for, and he has a list of more manager needs for beds than even this could provide. But this property, which historically was used residentially, you know, earlier in the 20th century, the rooms are actually bedrooms. They're already in. Ironically, not all that much work has to be done to the inside of the building. So the request is, at a very basic level, decrease the number of employees, increase the number of residents from five to 10. The how? This gets a little confusing, and I won't go through all of it, or as much of it as you would like, I will go through. The, it's a split zone property, so under the Chatham bylaw, a special, special permit is authorized a special special permit is authorized to allow a use in the commercial part of the property or in the residential part of the property that is allowed in the commercial part of the property if you get a special permit. And that's the first request. Then in the here, in the commercial zone by special permit, you could have the number of bedrooms that we're requesting. So the special permits are the first is to allow what's allowed in the commercial zone in the residential part of the property, which is where the building is located on the property. Second is to allow the special permit for the 10 beds instead of five. And the third is the 5B to alter pre-existing nonconforming situations. So you're authorized to grant all those special permits. You have to find that the proposal will not be detrimental to the neighborhood and will not be substantially more detrimental than the existing conditions. Respectfully submit that both it will not be substantially more detrimental and won't even be detrimental. This is a use application, so there are no changes proposed to the site. The site that's out there now, which was redeveloped, landscaped, and everything in conformance with your 2018-19 approval, stays the same. Parking, landscaping, setbacks, there are no exterior changes to the property. The parking is conforming for the use that is being requested. The land area is conforming for the number of beds that are being requested under the zoning bylaw. In order to address potential concerns for having some additional residential use in the property, the applicant has proposed as conditions, this is in the application, but I'd like to read them into the record, would request in your decision, if you so approve, that each employee will be required to sign a code of conduct to ensure a good environment for the property and the neighborhood. This code of conduct will include that there will be enforced quiet hours, including no outside parties and noise from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM daily. That overnight guests are prohibited. This, as we discussed prior, there was very important that there be one person per bedroom. And third, that for a first violation of the code, there will be a warning. A fine will be assessed if there is a second violation, and if there were to be a third violation, the employee would be removed from the property. And so these conditions where are, this is new. We didn't propose these during our first application a few months ago. So we're requesting that those be included as conditions to, again, attempt to ensure that this will not be detrimental to the neighborhood. I believe it will actually be pretty much invisible to the neighborhood. The other aspect and the very important aspect is when you look at, if you looked at the Google Earth image, there is one house that's closer. It's 40 feet building to building, and that the next nearest residence is more than double or three times as far away, and then you've got commercial buildings. That closest neighbor, which is 16 Nameless Lane, that property just changed hands. And Mr. Thulander reached out to the new owners, and you have a letter in your file from Robert Roper Jr. Note, he's the owner, he and his wife are the owners, and they note in that letter that they have spoken this to Thulander and that they are in support of the proposal. They do not have any concerns with the request to increase the beds and decrease the staffing. And the, I'm going to go very quickly on this part, but I'm happy to go through it because I know you've been moving very adroitly through the process, the applications today. The Section 8C 4 criteria, all of the criteria for approval of special permit, adequacy, suitability, impact, all of those. We respectfully, and again, I'll go through them in more detail if you want, but we respectfully submit that given that there are no physical changes to the property and that you have approved the the mixed use of the building, that there will be no negative impacts that wouldn't meet those special permit criteria. I also wanted to talk about safeguards because there's one other very, very big safeguard here that is over and above the conditions of this code of conduct that I mentioned. And that is that specifically under the zoning bylaw, the special permit that we're requesting is only good for one year. Under the bylaw, we have to come back to you, this board, each year under a publicized, a public hearing like this, notice to the abutters, a chance to be heard, a review by the board. And so each year, we need to come back and you need to expressly find the same thing that I'm asking you to find today, that it is, the proposal is not going to be detrimental and that is in that it is in compliance with zoning bylaw. So if you approve this today, and we hope you will, we're going to be back here next year. And so if there are issues, if there were to be any problems, we'll all know about them next year, and we'll either address them or we won't address them, and you'll either approve it or you won't. But the biggest safeguard that I see on this proposal is that it's only good for one year. This will let us, I hate to use the word, I was thinking of this, but is in an experiment or it's a test. It's a chance to let, provide a seriously needed housing need for these five additional managers. But you have the enforcement safeguard mechanism that we've got to come back to you under the zoning bylaw. So I respectfully submit that between that reality and the conditions that we're proposing about the code of conduct, that there would be no detriment now, and we submit that there will be no detriment in the future, but you will be able to review that and establish whether what we're saying turns out to be true or not in the future. Finally, I want to talk about process. This, when we went through the process in 2018 and 19, we had the special permit from this board. We also had a site plan review approval from the planning board. In this case, we also, because of that, we have to go back to the planning board. There's always the the question of who goes first, the chicken or the egg. In this case, the planning board is scheduled for two weeks from roughly today. It's April 10th or 11th, or whatever that week is. In this particular case, a site plan review is is, I think, pretty much straightforward because we aren't proposing any site changes. This is, it's a technical thing that we have to go through the site plan review because we went through it before, but we're not proposing any changes. So what you see on the plan is what you approved three years ago, which is we're not asking to change it. So we're here respectfully asking for you to grant the special permit so that we could make this change to the mixed use of the building. If you have questions for either one of us, we'd be happy to answer them, and we really appreciate your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone here today on Microsoft Teams that would like to speak in favor of this application? There's a gentleman in the back of the room.
David Oppenheim. As you know, I used to own the Wayside Inn up until last year and, but I still own a lot of properties in the area, and I am completely in support of this thing. In fact, I strongly encourage you to approve this. When I was here, however many weeks ago, when this was before you, the question was asked why we didn't have an attorney here who had represented us back in 2018 or whatever year it was. And the reason was because they had addressed all the concerns we had, and we had no problem, and we found ourselves supportive. I had spoken to Mr. Thulander, making, and it became part of the presentation that there would be one resident per room, and I think that's that's important. I think one of the things that we really have to understand is we have a housing problem in Chatham. I think it's not new news to anybody. It's affordable, attainable, workforce, and seasonal. We've all, having had the hotels that I had, it is brutal getting employees. And then once you're lucky enough to get employees, it's even more brutal to find them a proper place to stay. We have to be able to hire the right people to come here and work here and present, represent their business as well, and they're entitled to have a decent place to live. I've lived here for over 50 years, and that was the chauffeur quarters. It was part of CBI for years. If you go back probably to 2015 or something, we were in all sorts of arguments about the bowling alley, the chauffeur's quarters. There were all sorts of problems. Those problems have been addressed. And whether the where, the bowling alley has been cleaned up, it's been, it's been done. They've done everything they said. We're no longer involved with all sorts of things, and I think under present management that this is, they're not going to take the risk that there be any problems. It's too important to them. It's they're making an investment in people, and they're not going to take the risk to lose that investment. One of the things that I think several of the people that spoke, your board that spoke in favor of it, mentioned the idea that it's a one-year permit. I wasn't quite clear on that because one of the problems we have in town often is you guys make a decision, somebody goes ahead and whether it's a variance, special permit, they build something, and they don't do it exactly the way you approved it, and then you get into enforcement issues. And you have to go, whether it's it's noise or whether it's they build too much, you have to go through an entire process of whether it's the building inspector or police department or any other, and for Board of Health, whatever. I didn't understand that this is, I knew this was a one-year permit, but I didn't realize that at the end of one year, you do it all over again and include in the public opinion where all the abutters are actually notified. That's what's different. So if the worst-case fear is that, you know, this, some people are abusive in in noise or which, again, I don't think that there's much of a chance of that happening. And let's say somebody did call and complain, whether it be the building inspector's office or the police department or whomever, and it wasn't properly addressed, which hopefully that wouldn't happen, but let's just say it wasn't. You're going to know about it at the next, a year from now because those people that complained will be at the hearing next year. So I think this is, that's the insurance policy that gives you, puts you in a position where you can really do the right thing for the businesses in this community, recognizing the need for housing in this community, recognizing that not, CBI is a very important business in this town. All businesses are important in this town, and we're all facing, even though I don't own the hotels anymore, I face it with the other businesses we own, and we're always dealing with housing. We had the Wayside Inn. We had housing in the middle of residential neighborhoods. Never once did we have a complaint in 25, 30 years, almost 30 years. So I strongly urge you to do what's right for this property. I think it's beautifully maintained. That's the one other thing. There's going to be less employees. I think there'll actually be less traffic because the people that are going to stay there and residents are going to walk to work. If you had more office people, that's more people coming to work to that location. So I think it's it's a win all the way around, and I really, really hope you'll support not only Chatham Bars Inn but the whole business community by giving this its one-year approval, and and I don't think there's any question it's going to be successful. Thank you.
Is there anyone else either here on Microsoft Teams that would like to speak in favor?
I see no one else that wishes to speak in favor.
Then I'll read the correspondence. First, we have a note, a memo from Judith Giorgio, our health agent here in Chatham. She writes on 3/28, "I've reviewed the request for a use change in the proposed renovations. The property is connected to Town Sewer. The plan to convert this property to mixed-use office and residential does not add sewer flow to the property and is acceptable. I have no concerns." Then we have a a letter. This is from Robert P. Roper Jr. And he's the gentleman who owns the property at 16 Nameless Lane. He writes on March 15th, "My wife and I are the new owners of 16 Nameless Lane, which is located adjacent to the Chatham Bars property. This letter is to advise the ZBA that we have discussed the proposed changes with the management of Chatham Bars in detail and have no objection to their proposed request." Then we have a email. This is from Charles Baldwin of 11 Nameless Lane. He writes on March 15th, "Photos of three residential homes close to 20 Bars, which is also in the R20 zone. The special permit approved March 2019 for use at 20 Chatham Bars Ave. Granted office space for 16 people and a five-bedroom apartment. Over the last two years, there has not been the full use of the permit. I have not seen the number of people and cars that would be at the property of the office and apartment were being used to the full extent. I feel that the original special permit should be used as it was proposed before we agreed to a change at this time. I am opposed to change that would include a 10-bedroom apartment." Then we have an email. This is from Ryan Christenberry. He writes, he's the principal planner for the Town of Chatham. He writes on March 8th, "This application is scheduled for the April 10th Planning Board meeting." Then we have a email. This is from Sally Skilin. She writes on March 14th, "I own a home in the neighborhood next to 20 Bars. I think that 10 dormitory rooms at that address would be detrimental to the abutting residential properties. I hope this will be taken into consideration." That is the extent of the correspondence. Is there anyone here today or on Microsoft Teams that would like to speak? Mr. Baldwin? Just identify yourself, please.
Charles Baldwin, 11 Nameless Lane, Chatham. Everybody's talking about no place for people to reside that are summer help. Mr. Rudnick bought the Stone Horse Motel in Harwich Port, which is 15 minutes away from downtown Chatham. He built a huge apartment building, brand new, that he designed specifically for summer help. So there is a place for people to go. I am opposed to having 20 Chatham Bars Avenue designated as a dormitory. Can you show the pictures of the neighborhood, please?
The aerial from Google?
The the email that I sent you?
Or the one that you sent. Okay, one moment, please.
Well, that's okay. As you can see, the people from Florida who think this is going to be okay are only 40 feet away. Number 24, Nameless Lane, is 80-some feet away. And my property is 160 feet away, 170 feet away. Considering that they fall into the 300-foot radius to be considered, I think that's substantial. There are five homes on Nameless Lane that are affected by this, and the one property that my sister and I own at 52 Chatham Bars Avenue is is affected. I have great respect for Gary because he solved a huge problem created by his predecessor. The town had to fight for two years on the use of the property at the garage. They operated under a cease and desist order. It was a nightmare for the town. It was a nightmare for the neighborhood. And it was Gary and Mr. Singer that fixed it. But I can't be sure that Gary is going to be around forever. And we could end up with another manager like his predecessor. So I think that a dormitory can be a slippery slope. And I understand that Mr. Thulander is going to do his best. But when Gary retires and it's down the down the line, it could be a nightmare. And these homes are too close. And there's plenty of housing supplied by Mr. Rudnick down at the Stone Horse Apartments. And so I I I have to remain opposed to a 10-bedroom dormitory. Thank you.
Is there anyone else either here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak against or has a specific question? If so, please indicate you'd like to join the meeting.
There is no one else that wishes to speak.
Mr. Singer, did you want to have any rebuttal?
Well, I will say that I agree with David Oppenheim and Mr. Roper 150%. As far as Charlie, we were chatting about it. We respectfully, you know, disagree about the impact to the neighborhood, and I would just reiterate that I think with the proposals and the requirements of the zoning bylaw, I think there is protection for both the neighborhood and the town and the board if there were to be any concerns. And I I do, since I am involved with a lot, a number of housing projects, I do respectfully disagree that there's plenty of availability. I just don't think there is, even with some of the apartments that have been created. The demand is just outstripping it by factors of a lot. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll have questions from the board.
Could I, could Mr. Thulander say something? I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board. Gary Thulander, Managing Director, Chatham Barzyn. Just a couple of words. I've been here for five years, and I just, I turn 60 tomorrow, so I don't plan on retiring anytime too soon. But we have, we go from 250 employees to almost 800 employees now, so we have to find 500 people housing. And Mr. Baldwin is correct, there's some people that are in the business of supplying housing, but there is a very much of a shortage. We do, and just, we do rent some rooms from Mr. Rudnick, but his facilities are 100% occupied right now. And we are still short probably over 120 beds right now, and that's for line level. But this, again, this is specifically for managers, okay, for my facility. And these people are very important for us to run our business. We're proposing internally, this is part of their package, their financial package, because it's hard to find. Sometimes you offer a job to someone, they accept, and then they do research of trying to find housing, and they either can't afford it or can't find it, and they reneg, unfortunately. So this is a big part of our solution for our seasonal managers here for our property. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll have questions from the board. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I can't help but, I'm trying to understand the difference between season, between the managers and your other help. For some reason, I don't like that elitist type of concept. Can you help me out with that?
Do you want me to say number?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. One second. Question. Absolutely. A lot of the other housing is sort of dormitory style, and this is a little bit more private. They have one room, one person, as we all presented here, and a bathroom, shared living room and a kitchen. So, and it's, again, smaller, there's only up to, hopefully up to 10 people only in the building for housing. So we feel for the managers that would be more comfortable. But for the employees, you know, we are under contract for over, I think, 225 beds in different towns in Chatham. We do have some downtown in Chatham also, but that's, again, for line-level staff that can walk to the hotel. So we're trying to be as fair as possible to everyone who wants to come work at CBI.
Yeah, but it sounds like you're giving the nicer, more intimate housing to the managers.
Well, we're trying to make sure that we accommodate all the needs, to be honest with you, the best we can. But the reason why we wanted to do managers is we felt that, with respect to the comments of the neighbors, we wanted to make sure that people are a bit more mature that are in that area. So, you know, for example, I've got three restaurant managers there right now, and our manager in my recreation department. So to make sure that we control the environment, make sure it's safe and good for the community, we wanted to make sure that we put the managers there.
So do the managers have a more stringent background check than the other employees?
Actually, just so, you know, just for everyone's record, we do background check on every single employee that comes.
Is there any difference between the background check for managers and the background check for other employees?
I don't think so, not to my knowledge, it's the same.
Okay. And then the other thing is, so is this going to only be occupied for several months a year, or what about the rest of the year?
Good question. There might be a few that are year-round, okay? Majority, our goal is to have seasonal. Most people come in around April and depart sometime after October, some a little later.
Because you still have managers all year round, though, right?
We do, yes, absolutely. And so, you know, again, it would be a mixture. So we have, most people will be seasonal and some will be year-round. But again, our season starts in May, but we need people prior to, obviously, for training and things like that. And then they leave us sometime during the, maybe right before the holidays.
Okay, thank you.
So, you're welcome.
Buck?
Thank you. So my first question is, well, actually, it's a statement of recognition. I'm proud to live in a town that has a five-star resort, and I commend you on that. I think that's a recent accomplishment.
That's correct. Thank you so much.
Very nice.
Took 10 years to get there.
Well, and in all the years that I've been here, however long that's been, Chatham Barzyn has always made an improvement to wherever they've done anything, including the landscaping, which I appreciate all the pansies that you put in right away. I don't know if you got pansies this year yet, but your landscaping is fabulous.
Thank you.
You keep, it's impeccable, and that's probably has something to do with the ratings that you've achieved. And Mr. Singer, you're excellent. I wish you could come here more. You come prepared, and you make your case, and it's very convincing. Unfortunately, Mr. Baldwin presented some information that I think when we look at a special permit, we have to look substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And this living thing and everything that we've heard about the dormitory and the shortage, that's almost like a Cape problem. And I look at, wondering, besides Mr. Roper's letter, which was very nice as a brand-new person coming into town, I think he did, you know, he doesn't have maybe the experience that Mr. Baldwin has there. And I think the other letter of concern was from Mr. Skilin.
Sally.
Sally. So that's two. And at 420 Main Street, which is inside the 300 circle, is Edward and Ellen Healy. And after the last hearing, they made a special attempt to reach out to me, to thank me for my position, which was not in support of it. And again, when they heard that it was coming up to us for a second bite of the apple, they expressed their lack of support for it. So, and I've mentioned several times while sitting on this board that letters of opposition are a heck of a lot harder to write, not with grammar and spelling and punctuation, but it doesn't warm the overall relationship in the neighborhood. So I guess, I don't have any questions.
Jenny?
I do have a couple of questions. Oh, first of all, I do want to also say that your presentation was very helpful, and I do like how you added the code of conduct in there. I think that's additive, and that's nice. And then I also like, Mr. Singer, how you, it was actually Paul Semple who made the comment, I believe, at the December 22 hearing about the annual review and revocability of the, so the fact that you brought that up and have incorporated that into your proposal, I think that's significant. So my questions are, the diagrams show one bedroom. You've been talking about one bedroom. Is that diagram memorialized? Like, will it be truly one bedroom? Would that ever change? I mean, is that, are we to rely completely on the drawing that shows one bed?
The floor plans that have been submitted by the architect are the floor plans that actually exist.
Okay.
Excuse me, because, again, it was a chauffeur's quarters for 100 years, so those bedrooms, the rooms that will be bedrooms were bedrooms before, they're all there and no changes would...
And I should have been more clear. I understand five bedrooms, but five additional beds is what I'm getting at?
Oh, yeah. If you look at the floor plans, there are going to be, I think it's eight bedrooms, one bed each on the second floor. There are two bedrooms, one bed each on the first floor, and the employees are also on the first floor.
I just wanted the clarification of the one bed, so thank you for that. From a safety perspective, I was thinking, I know you have the centralized kitchen. Would there be anything that we could add to, like, no accessory, cooking, microwave, hot plate, anything like that in the rooms? It wouldn't be necessary because you have the centralized kitchenette down on the first floor, but...
We'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I just think that...
The kitchen, I think, is sufficient for the people there, yeah.
I mean, safety is one of the things we're looking at from a criteria perspective. Those were all my questions.
Paul?
I have no questions.
Yeah, I don't think I have any further questions. I was concerned about the same thing that Jenny brought up, about the safety of allowing, you know, that sort of thing. I'm good.
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Oh, second?
Buck says yes. Jenny?
Jenny says yes.
Paul says yes?
Yes.
And I say, yes. So deliberations. Paul?
Well, when this was last before us, I said that I thought that the provision for a dormitory was important and that the conditions of a special permit in this situation could protect the neighborhood, and I still think that that's the case. I think that it's significant that it actually has to come back before the board on an annual basis, and if there were any problem as a result of this being tried, then in that situation, we would have the ability to revise or revoke the special permit that had been created. So I think we have enough in place to protect the neighborhood. I'm sensitive to Mr. Baldwin's position, but I think, and I'm also sensitive to the fact that Gary Thulander is not going to be here forever. Very few of us are going to be. So I am going to vote in favor of the special permit, given that we have the conditions under the special permit, which I think is about the only thing we have, and maybe the only thing we have that comes back on an annual basis.
I can't think of any others.
Yes.
Randy?
I supported it last time, and I like it even better this time. And the fact that you have to pay for the application and come back, and you can't miss that, is very compelling, and I wholeheartedly support it, and I hope my colleagues do, too. And the fact that you're not going to live forever, my children's biggest fear is that I will. But in any event, you have to come back every year, no matter who it is. So that's the protection.
Buck?
Some people might have thought my previous question was my deliberation, but I saved the best for last. And it's the key thing, when I look at it, I wouldn't really be very happy, and I've asked a number of people this hypothetically, would you like to have a dormitory on your street or in your neighborhood when you're in a residential area? There weren't a lot of questions. It was, what are you talking about? And I said, well, you know, we've got a situation. I don't want one of those on my street. And that, to me, is almost like they're saying it's substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. Now, maybe they shouldn't feel that, or they shouldn't think that, but that's what they said, and that's how I'm voting.
I think it helps the need that we have for staff, CBI, for housing in general in the town. I, you know, Chatham Barzyn is the, I believe, if not the largest, one of the largest private employers in Chatham. I think that you mentioned some specific statistics around, you know, your employee needs. You know, the location of the dormitory, and with all due respect to Mr. Baldwin, of the neighborhood, is downtown. I mean, there's no, sorry, there's noise, there's traffic. I'm not swayed by the addition of five bedrooms contributing to it being significantly detrimental to the neighborhood. So I would support it.
Yeah, from my perspective, the, it's been, what, four years since we had the original agreement? And to my knowledge, there's been no complaints, you know, of noise or sacrificing chickens at midnight, or, you know, any of that stuff. I just haven't, you know, when Mr. Baldwin's presentation, I thought he was going to say, well, you know, last, you know, but not hearing anything. And incidentally, Sarah reminded me that you don't have to come back to us every year. It's only if there's been a problem. It isn't that you have to come back. So it would only happen if there has, a problem has developed. I think that's correct interpretation, so...
Yeah, she and I were looking, we both, oh, point, if I can respond. Yeah, I might have read the bylaw differently than she did, but there's definitely a safeguard built into the bylaw.
Yes, there is, but it's not, it's not something you have to do every year, so I don't want you to, you know, leave here thinking that.
Sure.
So if there had been problems that had developed, okay, we would have known about it, you know? I just think we would have. So I believe you run a tight ship, and the code of conduct is great, it's got nothing to do with us. Incidentally, that would not be a condition that we could ever put on because we can't make town employees responsible to that. That's on you, and that's wonderful, and the neighbors know it, and I'm sure you're going to send around a copy of it to Mr. Roper, who now is your contiguous neighbor and so forth. So I know, I'm going to be voting for this. So Paul, I can't see that we can have any conditions.
I don't, I don't see the need for any conditions, given there's practically no construction that's going to be taking place here. And I guess I agree with you, the code of conduct is something which may be a policy of CBI, but is not something which is subject to our conditioning.
Right. I thank you for the offer, but I'm glad you're doing it.
Thank you.
The question in my mind is, do you want us, Sarah, to vote on each of these individually, special permits, or shall we take it as three together?
You, so there's at least two you need to vote on. The 3D, 3I, which is allowing a use only permitted in the less, the split-zone provision. And then the rest of them can be taken as an overall special permit, because you need to allow the use to be, you need to allow, you need to allow the lot to be used for a business provision before you can vote on the other ones. As Andrew laid out, you have, if you'd like to do all three, that's not a problem.
I think I'd just as soon do all three of them, just do them in sequence, and then we've got it clear that we're doing it.
I agree, I agree.
So I'll move to approve the application for a special permit in accordance with Section 3D, 3I of the bylaw.
Second?
Okay, we need a vote. Buck?
Buck votes no.
Jenny votes yes.
Paul votes yes?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And secondly, I will move to approve the application for a special permit in accordance with Section VB of the zoning bylaw.
Second?
Buck votes no.
Jenny votes yes.
Paul votes yes?
I vote yes.
Yes.
And thirdly, in accordance with Sections 3C, 4C, 10, VIIB11, and VIIID2B of the zoning bylaw, I move to approve that application.
Second?
Buck votes no.
Jenny votes yes.
Paul votes yes?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All votes are four to one, so you were successful. Thank you, gentlemen, very much for your presentation.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Okay. All right. Anything else to bring before the meeting?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second?
All right, we need a vote.
Buck votes yes.
Jenny votes yes.
Paul votes yes.
Randy votes yes.
I vote yes. And Sarah, what's the official time?
It is 4:46 PM.
All right. Thank you, one and all. Thank you, one and all.